Good morning, we are delaying the start of the Board of Supervisors meeting, waiting for Supervisor Rasmussen to arrive. He was out checking on a file problem. Okay, good morning, welcome to the Monday, the April third version of the Supervisors meeting. I'll call the meeting to order, and are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve the agenda as.
Go move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda, all those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Approve the minutes of the last meeting, Betty, if you would read the minutes of the March meeting, please.
March twenty seventh, twenty twenty three, twenty twenty three, Chairman Cluse called the regular meeting of the Wright County Board of Supervisors order at nine AM. Members present were Cluse and Rasmussen, withheldable absent. Motion by Rasmussen, second by Cluse to approve the tentative of agenda, motion carries. Minutes of the previous regular meeting of March twenty 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 three were read and approved with two corrections. Approved claims per payment. An open forum Sandy McGrath, Environmental Health Director, spoke about the postcards being mailed out by a company that says there was arsenic found in wells. The company's mailing, the postcards did well testing for, for a cost. McGrath mentioned Wright County uses a grant to do free wells water testing. The samples are sent to a state lab with results mailed back to McGrath. These results are then sent to landowners and if McGrath sees concerns, she will also send a booklet out for reference. Received and filed the jail inspection letter from the state of Iowa Chief Jail Inspector. This inspection included examinations of the staff training records, required documentation and prisoner files. The letter stated the Wright County Jail is clean, well managed and well maintained facility. Motion by Rasmussen, second by Cluse to approve the first reading of ordinance number sixty five, tanning facility inspections. Motion carries, the full ordinance is available in the auditor's office and Wright County Public Health, as well as the county website. Adam Clemens, Wright County Engineer, gave an update on the secondary roads. There were six work orders completed last week, blades went out last Monday to spot blade trouble areas and blade four miles when conditioned, it's all conditions allowed. Trucks went out at five AM on Thursday, March twenty third for a winter weather event. The road superintendent, bridge and sign foreman and shop foreman visited Iowa Central Community College to recruit for the open mechanic position in Wright County. Christine Paradise, Senior Construction Tech for Snyder and Associates and Dan Reed Meyer with McClure Engineering met with the board to discuss what they can do to assist Wright County if appointed as Wright County Inspector for, for the Summit Carbon Solutions and Pipeline. Snyder and Associates will be obtaining all the required documents from Summit Carbon Solutions as in land agreements and easements, alignment sheets, topsoil depth surveys and the separate agreements. Paradise mentioned she would like to collect all the private title maps from individual landowners. Wright County has more centerline properties than any other county in the state. The service provided by Snyder and Associates will be, associates will be reimbursed by Summit Carbon Solutions to Wright County. Snyder and Associates and McClure Engineering will have staff available onsite every Iowa pipeline is in construction. The action to appoint Snyder and Associates has, as the county inspector will be tabled until next week, April third. Elizabeth Thayer with Gardner and Company met with the board to give an update on the Wright County audit. Thayer went over the audit book with the board and explained that the, all the different sections of the audit. She also covered the findings related to the financial statements and explained expectations and the county and the auditor's recommendation on the compliance with the findings. Thayer mentioned that there will need to be a single audit done with federal audit clearinghouse for the American Rescue Plan Act monies that the county received. Motion by Rasmussen, second by Cluse during the meeting, motion carries.
Are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none, they'll stand and approve this, right? Item number four, approved claims for payment, there were, I think, five or six signatures required.
Yep, and.
Rick got it done?
Yes, we're there, thank you, sir.
Item number five, hold open form for public input. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Yes, Tony.
I just want to let everyone know that the twenty twenty three assessment notices were at post office Friday, so everybody should be receiving them soon, there were increases all across the board. If anybody has any questions, we have pamphlets, we have information in the assessor's office, have them give us a call, email us, stop in the open.
Right, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning Dean, it's Bob.
Morning Bob.
Two questions, the, on the agenda, you've got the Snyder and Associates.
Yes, sir.
Is that going to take the place of ISG then?
That's correct.
Okay, sounds like, I hope it works, okay? And, next question is, last week's meeting, I can play, I've tried several different other ones on YouTube, but for some reason, last week's meeting isn't there yet.
Okay.
We'll talk to Andy after.
Yeah, I will get with, Andy Flag, our IT specialist, and, and get that posted.
Because there was, in the paper, it said there was a lot of discussion with them and their presentation, and I'd like to watch that, so, whenever it's done, that'd be great.
Okay, we'll get it done.
Thank you.
You bet.
Well, I've got a question, but, when I look at it on YouTube, I get, all I see is a little window up in the corner, on the last two or three, I think, that I've looked at, and I don't know why I don't get the full screen.
Okay.
Is there, I can expand button on your?
I've tried, I've tried everything I can think of, but that button is bugging.
Good. Bob, when you, when you've read the live, or listened to the last couple, have you had any problems with that where it only shows the small screen? Or does it expand to the full screen?
No, mine expanded to the full screen, I, I just can't even get, a week ago was, nothing at all. I just tried it a little bit ago, and what I'm getting is, it just takes me to the twentieth instead of the twenty seventh of March, so.
Okay, very good, we'll get that taken care of, and can you hear it, okay though? Would you listen to it?
Yeah.
Okay. Very good, item number six, hold the second reading of ordinance sixty five on tan, tanning facility inspections. We held the first reading last week. There are three readings required, and they cannot be waived, right?
It's an ordinance, you can't even, it's just, because it's an ordinance, it goes into law, you could, but if you felt like there was any problems, you might want to.
There are no changes from, from previously?
Need a motion?
Yes, sir, I do.
I make a motion to approve resolution on the tanning, second reading.
Second.
It's a ordinance.
Ordinance, ordinance.
Not a resolution.
Sorry.
I have a motion in the second to approve the second reading of ordinance number sixty five on tanning facility inspections, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Okay, nine fifteen, we've got a couple minutes, let's go down to item number eight, item number seven is a timed event, we're moving to item number eight. Review and take action on resolution twenty twenty three dash eighteen, supporting current local option sales tax structure. This resolution is in response to Senate File five fifty, which is essentially going to take away the local control concerning local option sales tax. It would sunset those provisions by January first of twenty twenty five. In replace of that, they're proposing increasing the, the sales tax and three eights of that then would be used to fund the Iowa Water and Legacy Trust Fund. We are in support of, of funding the, that trust fund. It was enacted back in, I don't know, like, twenty ten, thank you, in twenty ten, and it has never been funded. So, again, this resolution, I will read it for you, whereas the voters of Wright County and cities within the county have voted to enact the one cent local option sales tax in accordance with Iowa Code four twenty three Bravo. And whereas the revenue derived from the tax is used for rural property tax relief, rural infrastructure and rural community betterment. And the residents of Wright County have grown to rely on these revenues as a means to reduce property taxes, property taxes. And the twenty twenty three legislative session has seen the introduction of Senate File five fifty, which is, proposes to convert the local option sales tax efforts into a statewide sales tax and impose the local option sales tax in every jurisdiction, thereby triggering the constitutional amendment to require an allocation of three eights of a cent to the Iowa Water and Land Legacy Trust Fund. And Senate Fire File five fifty proposes to backfill revenue loss during, due to the proposal. There are concerns of the legislature's ability to continue backfilling revenues and voters across Iowa who have voted to either implement a local option sales tax or to, or to not do so. And voters across Iowa who have voted to utilize the local option sales tax have approved revenue purpose statements. And Senate File five fifty also somestates these provisions on January fifth, January first, twenty twenty five, after which no jurisdiction will have the authority to take either a local option sales tax proposal or revenue purpose statement to a vote, essentially deleting the local government's ability to have a local option sales tax. Therefore, the Wright County Board of Supervisors would like to express their support of the current local option sales tax. The current law best represents the interests of voters and furthers the reaper, the reduction of property, property taxes, which is a common goal of the county and Iowa Legislature. The Board, Board of Supervisors unanimously supports the Iowa Water and Land Legacy Trust Fund. However, Senate File five fifty, as currently written, would not only strip the county of of control over local option sales tax revenues, but would effectively disregard the will of the voters. Be duly adopted the third day of April twenty twenty three, with the vote here on being as follows. And then there's provisions to sign it. Is there any discussion concerning resolution twenty twenty three dash eighteen?
Have they done a financial analysis on how it would affect small counties and large counties?
Not to my knowledge. Have you heard anything?
Doesn't change the status of Summit Carbon Solutions Pipeline Permit. Things that still need to happen in order for for them to start constructing on the pipeline. But being proactive and having someone in place ahead of time is what the board desires to do here. Again, Carl, we we had presentation by Katrina Paradise, Catherine Paradise, excuse me. And Dan Weidemeyer, again, McClure Engineering is working with Snyder and Associates. Associates.
Yeah, I have no issue with the turnover. I asked you to switch over to.
Do you want me to read this?
Absolutely, please.
Comes now the Wright County Board of Supervisors naming and designating the firm Snyder and Associates Incorporated. A professional engineering firm with engineers license under Iowa Code Chapter five forty-two B. To serve as Wright County Inspector in the construction of the Summit Carbon Solutions Pipeline System. Wright County Inspector shall be responsible for, but not limited to onsite inspections and documentation of compliance with the I U B standards. For restoration of agricultural land in accordance with the restoration plan and or written independent company and landowner agreements. Pursuant to one ninety-nine Iowa Administrative Code nine point one parentheses two and Iowa Code. S S four seven, uh, four hundred seventy-nine point two nine and four seventy-nine B point two oh. Proper notice shall be provided by pipeline company or pipeline companies contractor. Or representative of all onsite activity, including but not limited to surveying, staking, clearing, topsoil stripping, stockpiling, trenching. Lowering and tile repairs, backfill and compaction, hydrostatic testing, boring. Restoration or any other pipeline construction activity or pipeline pre-construction activity in Wright County, Iowa, to the following point of contact. Which would be Christina Paradise with Snyder and Associates Incorporated with an address in Fort Dodge, Iowa. In addition, the pipeline company or the pipeline company's contractor or representative shall provide the Wright County Inspector the following records. Construction schedules, alignment sheets with tracked information, project route and right of way limit. Project specifications, procedural manners, manuals, list of affected persons, independent landowner. Agreements, topsoil survey depth results and tile maps received from landowners. And any other document per documents pertinent to the construction of the pipeline in Wright County, Iowa. In addition, pipeline company, pipeline company's agent and pipeline company's contractors. Contact information shall be provided to the Wright County Inspector Primary Point of Contact shown above. In addition, payment per service of Wright County Inspector, regardless of whether the pipeline is constructed. Shall be borne by the pipeline company with Wright County submitting monthly invoices and monthly payments made by the pipeline company. So stated Wright County Board of Supervisors this third day of April twenty twenty-three.
Any further discussion?
I make a motion to approve the appointment.
A second of a motion and a second to approve the appointment of Snyder and Associates. As our or designating them as our county inspector for the carbon summit conditions pipeline. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
And it's summit carbon.
Who did I say?
Carbon summit.
Sorry, summit carbon, stand corrected. Item number nine, Adam Clemmons. Pardon me? Okay, let's uh. Let's talk about meetings.
Can you sign the?
Yes, ma'am. Do we have any?
I had more Tuesday trying to think about any else while I'm checking pile. That I work we just had done this weekend. On a piece of piping coming out of the dips that I broke off. And I'm working with Courtney on seeing if that's warranted or what we're going to do with it.
I had no meetings last week. I had the. CFR, we were. This year was the the, since we've merged with Prelude as of July first. This was the first audit that was done by. The auditing firm that we normally have do CFR's audit. They also did Prelude's audit. Or what would have been Prelude now CFR East over in Iowa City and also their Des Moines location. And was very pleased with the the audit. It was a. Forget the term they used and un. Unqualified, I think, um.
Yeah.
Anyway, it was as good as it as it gets. And they actually made money last year, so we're seeing a turnaround in that. And then next year, the audit will be one complete audit of the organization rather than. That campus versus this campus. And I guess that was. I did meet with David Johnson, Drainage Attorney on. Monday afternoon, spent about four hours with him going over the resolution concerning drainage. And that resolution, as it's been looked at and corrected. Again, we started with the template that was the Iowa Drainage District Association. Put out as a blanket resolution and we've tweaked that that has been sent to Tim Whipple, who is the. Representing us in the Summit Carbon Solutions. Pipeline, he's with Alors and Coon for them to look it over also. And there was concern that a contractual lawyer should look at it too, and I brought that up to Tim. And he said, we have those on our staff. They will we will make sure that they look at it also. Okay. We will be in recess here for a couple minutes. Well, I guess we won't. Well, item number ten is nine thirty, Dave Johnson Drainage Attorney. Possible closed session following Iowa Code twenty-one point five Charlie to discuss strategy with counsel. In matters that are presently in litigation or litigation is imminent. Where its disclosure would likely prejudice or disadvantage the position of the governmental body in that litigation. Again, this is concerning the Bogie Land Bridge, which there's already been litigation on that. So I would accept the motion to go into closed session so that we can have a. A phone conversation with Dave. He he requested this.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to go into a closed session by roll call vote.
Carl.
Aye.
Uh, Rick.
Aye.
Dean, aye, motion carried. We'll go into closed session and then we'll come back for the engineer's report. Okay, we are back in open session. It's nine fifty-eight. Amanda, if you would read our response. To the discussion held in closed session.
As trustees.
Yeah, acting as. Acting as trustee of Drainage District one oh seven.
Is this a proposed motion that somebody wants to propose?
You want to make a motion?
Uh, yeah. Yeah. Okay, acting as trustees for DD one oh seven, the Board of Supervisors, I would make a motion that we. Where are we at? That we had received the demand letter on March ninth twenty twenty-three from Bob Goodwin, acting on behalf of the Pogies via email. We will delay action and response until receipt of the engineer's report from McClure Engineering on BD one oh seven. We will consider its tentative approval of that engineer's report and schedule a public hearing to formulate a response. My motion.
I will second that.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Motion carry. Okay, we are out of, thank you, Dave. You too. We are back in session as the Board of Supervisors now, not as the Drainage District Trustees. And we are moving to item number nine, Adam Clemmons, Wright County Engineer.
Thanks. Which item on your agenda that you have in your packet that I gave you is Resolution twenty twenty-three dash seventeen. This resolution is for a bridge closure that we had to complete last Thursday, Wednesday or Thursday. Support information. Yeah, this is a completely different item. So our bridge inspector was out looking at Bridge one seventy-three, which is up on Hundred Twentieth Street between Hancock and Ida. Right here. They noticed on the pile cap that a crack had formed. Due to an oversized load and while they were out there, they had oversized loads going across or illegal loads. Cause this this road, this bridge is posted eleven eighteen twenty-one or eleven eighteen twenty. So the they they noticed semis going over it hog or feeder. Feed trucks going across it while he was inspecting it. So and he didn't notice that the crack happened then, but you can noticeably notice the crack. Is fresh because the interior of the crack is still brown. It's not aged by any means, so it's. Harry and I went out there and looked at the bridge or looked at the 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 damage. The crack is almost all the way across the beam, the header or the gap. So it's there's five or six piling on the last between the last. Nor the north northernmost piling and the next piling, that's where the crack ends right now. So we closed the bridge. We have put together a plan to replace the pile cap. We're sourcing a twelve by twelve timber through Eagle Building Supply and we will be, when we get all the. Supplies, materials, we'll make a work order and get that done. So what we'll have to do is remove the deck on the first span, remove the stringers. Have the excavator lift up the middle span just enough to get that twelve by twelve timber out. Roll one back in, do some strapping, replace some cross members on all the piers, put the put the. Span back in.
Is this a a bridge that's on?
It is on the five-year plan.
Five-year plan and was it going to be replaced with polverts?
Yes.
Box covert or?
Possibly box forwards. Depending on, we're still looking at if we can get tin whistles in. If the problem is, is that the north, when the stream comes in on the north, it's almost at a forty-five degree angle and it comes out at almost straight. So that's kind of the issue we have right there is, do we need to kink? Do we need to put a turn in the cords? So we're evaluating that.
So the cost to repair it now versus if it's on the five-year plan, would it come off the five-year plan there if we did?
So if we repair it, it'll go back to the same posting that it was. So it'll still have only a certain amount of life left in it.
And what do you think the total? So I know I know farmers because I am one. When when you. Repair it and open the bridge back up, although it's posted embargo. The same feed trucks, I'm assuming, are going to utilize that bridge. I mean, that's just human nature. Are we, are we throwing money? That we shouldn't?
I don't believe so, because I think you're still allowing passenger vehicles and legal loads to go across it. When I say legal loads, I mean the eleven, eighteen and twenty.
Right.
So we're still allowing traffic to go across that.
What do you think the cost to repair is going to be?
Um, I think the twelve by twelve beam was two grand. So I mean, probably less than ten to repair it. Okay, so and we're looking at if we have to, I put it in the budget, I put it in the program in the fifth year so that we could actually plan for it. If it's a twin box like twelve by twelve or something like that, it's probably going to be upwards of three hundred, four hundred grand by that time. Currently, and we have, I have five hundred thousand in for the 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 program.
And so. Probably is a bit like you said, but how did repair it now then?
Prepare now, give us a little bit of time so we don't have a an an eager reaction to try to repair it and find money. Cause it is all local. It is no B R money on this. This would come strictly from the taxpayers' construction or secondary roads. So, cause it is under twenty-five vehicles a day and it's not on AFM or federally route.
Gotta do what he's gotta do. Keep it open.
I would like to get it open as as soon as possible and it's just getting the materials and get it planned out, but.
Spend money on it when you're gonna hopefully tear it out in five years, but you can't just shut it down for five years. I mean, you could, but it'd really be.
It'd be inconvenient for the.
There is, there is a homeowner, there is a homeowner just to the west of this. On the north side of the road, where I think the the wife actually is a teacher in Belmont, so going to cause them a little bit of.
I mean, it was fifty or a hundred thousand dollars. It is a whole different game, but if it's going to be under ten, I don't.
Do what you gotta do to get it open back up to the hate closing bridges down, you know, we're back for tails.
So again, this resolution is closing.
Closing until we.
That bridge until it's repaired.
Which presumably you could probably get it done this spring.
Depending on when, depending on when the materials come.
Yes.
Obviously, twelve by twelve beam, I don't know, twenty-six foot, twenty-seven foot long, when it could get here.
Hearing that, I would entertain most to accept Resolution twenty twenty-three hundred seventeen.
Show move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept Resolution twenty twenty-three dash seventeen, which is a bridge embargo on bridge number one seventy-three. This is closing the bridge until it is repaired by roll call vote. Carl.
Aye.
Dean, aye, Rick.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Sign both of these right there, please.
They always just picked up one of the routine inspection every two years.
Yeah, and when Jeremy and I went out, it it's very, very fresh. If you look at the pictures we posted on Facebook. You can see on one of the ones that's looking up that it's brown on the inside of that. So it's not aged by any means. Next item is the public at-grade crossing agreement I just gave you. So we finally got the railroad to review our set of plans for Bridge two eleven, which is the Woolstock City VR Bridge. So they sent us this that we have to create an agreement, kind of essentially a work in the right-of-way agreement for the railroad. So obviously, there is. Dollar signs attached to this, fifteen grand for this, just these papers. And for us to go in the work on our road within their right-of-way. And you'll see a railroad grants, grants right for in consideration of fifteen thousand. On page two, there's also on page three. So for any work that is done by the railroad on section seven A, could be up to seventy-five thousand of review.
And is that a cost to us or that's their cost?
So they're.
Up to, doesn't mean it's going to be at that, but it could be up to.
For them to review our items.
Seventy-five thousand just to review.
Did we have to pay him so much just to put the application in?
Yes.
This is like a, yeah, what was it? What was the application?
It was up to thirty-five thousand on that. I think we paid close to nine or twelve or something like that already.
So again, this this is the bridge over Eagle Creek right next to the railroad tracks. There's a trestle just to the north of the of C seventy on this.
Yeah, I mean, our our guardrail is actually. They turned, had to turn the guardrail because it was going to go.
Yeah, it is really tight.
Yep. So we are receiving a million dollars from for this bridge or two million. Yeah.
The exhibits A, B and C?
Uh, they're at the office, so. I didn't want to have to print off another ream of paper this morning. If you'd like copies of mine, I'd need to.
I don't, I just didn't know these bits, if there was pictures to go with.
No, any pictures, just a bunch of words.
Okay, so you need us to take action to. To sign this agreement with the railroad.
Yep.
And that DOT number, is that the number of that bridge in nineteen fifty-nine?
That's the DOT crossing number for them, so. Yeah, just make action, ask for the public highway at grades, the crossing agreement.
Okay.
For the DOT number.
And how much money was that bridge going to be?
One point something, I'll have to get, I didn't, I'm not noticing it in my five-year plan, because I think I have to move it. Cause it was kicked out in the twenty-three to twenty-four, so I might have to come back to you next week on the five-year plan, so. Yeah, one point five, one point seven, somewhere in there. I think we got a million of that from the city VR.
So it's one point five bridge and you got a million of it.
Yes.
The rest of my economy.
County's VR, right, yes. Yeah, so we will plan to let this in the fall. So September wise, it'll be done, to be done, so it could close over the winter. And then to be done next year, we'll put a late start of next year on it, so hopefully get another price.
Those are the main thorough way too, isn't it?
Yeah, and within a couple of years, one, the next west of there.
Yes, hopefully, hopefully the grant goes through.
Right. Okay, so I would request a motion on the public highway at-grade crossing agreement for DOT number. One nine five nine thirty-eight.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the public highway at-grade crossing agreement for DOT bridge number nineteen fifty-nine thirty-eight B. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries.
You want one of these signs or just scan it to you?
Nope. I know where to find it if I need it.
Next item is the secondary roads I O D O T budget for this next coming F five point four. Going to look like this. So it matches the budget, the local budget. I don't know, when you guys having your public hearing for that? The tenth, so next week? Alright, so it'll match that. I have made the correction in the. The receipts from property tax levies of the two point one seven zero, seven two one million. It was the two point seven four million, just because of the correction that had to be made on the SF. So. So you can see in there that we estimate a carryover of the orders beginning from balance from this year to next of one point one million. Receipts for property tax levies, two point one, road use tax, which is gas tax, is three point four million. The Senate filed four fifty-one transfer jurisdiction, so any of the state roads that got transferred to. County is six thousand dollars that we get from that. Time twenty-one, which is vehicle registrations. Is we get four hundred twenty thousand. And then obviously some miscellaneous. Transfer from FM funds to local secondary non-tax tax refunds on our fuel. And then permits, trips, reimbursement from planning and zoning. And then so miscellaneous receipts of twenty-six thousand or a total receipts of seven point one seven five million. And then you go to the next page. Next year, engineering administration, seven hundred fifty-two thousand. Construction, since we don't have anything local, it's just all B R FM. We put in fifteen grand just to, if we need to buy some right-of-way for any construction projects. Roadway maintenance, which includes visiting polverts, roads, snow and ice control. Traffic control and road road clearing, three point five million. So if there, if you want to break down of that, I can do that, but just try and we've done it once already. General roadway, new equipment, equipment operations, tools, materials supply, real estate buildings, two point two million, point two four eight. For total expenditures of six point five million with an estimated carryover of six hundred and ten next year. Any questions on that?
Do you need more action?
I do.
I'd make a motion to approve the secondary road budget present. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, motion carry.
I'm going to request a. The item number, item letter.
D.
D, the table to next week, so I can review to make sure that that bridge does not need to be on the fire program. The two eleven, so request that. You guys want to make a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to table item D. Five-year program till next week.
I'll second that. I have a motion and a second to table item nine D until next week. If you'll see that that's on the schedule, Amanda.
Yep.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay, motion carry.
Thank you. Uh, next time is the.
This then, Adam, this will be pertinent next week or not?
Um, it'll, uh, yes, that'll, I'll get you new copies of the backside of it, but yeah, it's going to be almost the same thing. So, um, next item is the update. Guys are still out spot made, blading trouble areas and transitioning to blade and full miles. Reclaiming granular routes, so you'll see on some of our routes this. Out in the county right now, they're trying to get the granular that's kind of been pushed out in the grassy area on shoulder. They're reclaiming that granular, so they're leaving it right there to dry out, then they'll start working it back and forth. Trucks are finishing spot loads. As they do that, there, as those are getting done, they're going to transition into our program, which is engineer mouse. We're going to start hauling rock. We emptied out the sand control, sand sheds, the ice with the ice control sand on the outer sheds. To the clarion shed and then also hauled in all new sand salt or or sand to be mixed with the salt and. Put a big pile up in clarion that we'll use this next spring or next fall or winter, excuse me.
So you consolidated everything, will it be put back out to?
Yep, when we go to fill those outer sheds back up. The reason why we consolidate all the clarion, because it's all covered.
Okay.
So we'll put a tarp out, anything that's coming out on the outside, so that we don't lose any of that salt in that pile. So and then work orders we completed eight, the one that I wanted to bring your attention to is the right-of-way one. Along one sixtieth west of Iowa sixty-nine, the guys went out and cut brush to leave in any drifting. We have an issue right there that they identified and worked with any landowners that we needed to to cut some brush, so trees. Winter operations, they did go out on Saturday for about two hours just to, there was enough out there that they had to. Eight or two. And then I wanted to bring your attention to the superintendent again. We're still working on that mechanics position. I just want to keep it going in the agenda so that it gets out in the paper more. Keep talking about it, just we are still looking for a mechanic.
Did they go to Nyack?
They didn't go to Nyack yet. They're still. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that ends our agenda. Is there any other business?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried, meaning this adjourn.